November 7th order. Henry, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice
Everyone has an agenda. Is there any additions or changes to agendas that can be
I'd like to add to probably all business, the employee handbook.
Under new business, right after the update on the BLM meeting, give a quick update of, I was on Cheyenne on 26th, classified for joint appropriations, just give a quick update, that was a spur of the moment thing that happened, so I'll give a quick update Any other changes or additions?
Hearing none. One more? The agenda as amended, or?
I'd like a motion to approve the agenda with the updated new business, or is it a new or old business?
The old business.
A motion, probably seconded to approve the agenda as amended. We're in discussion. Hearing none. All the papers please say aye.
Aye.
Everybody ready to move forward? Go back over. On the payroll and vouchers, I had Becky bring these three board. I'm going to vacate the chair, turn the meeting over to Nate. We've got three vouchers that are not actually earmarked yet what they are. They're draw requests for the solid waste district on reimbursement money. So, I'll turn this, I'll turn it over to Nate and explain to everybody what it is. We've got three draw requests out there. What the board would like to do is get approval to pay these only when the reimbursement money is put in the county coffers. It's not being pre-authorized to pay it before the money's there. Board would like that done because we are out $1.3 million on these three draw requests and we need the money to, we don't want to, we'd like not have to wait until the first meeting in December to get these approved. So, anybody that'd like to look at them, they can look at them. The amounts passing down?
What are we anticipating the money's available for those?
The first draw request is set in Suzy's office already.
Okay.
So, money's coming in, but just the way the system works, we would end up having to wait until December to get these done.
I think there's any issue with your main unit representative, the chairman also, is that what's the assignment?
That's why I vacated this chair.
He's the chairman of the solid waste district.
Oh, I'm the chairman of the solid waste district.
This is, anyway, the chairman of the county commission.
Yeah, because we have to run it through county.
Okay.
All, all your grants are required to run through the county. So, my name on this is actually as the county commissioner, as the chairman of the board commissioner signing that.
Our approval.
That's why Bob had to sign it.
Bob had signed it as the solid waste district.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, there you go.
Yeah. Bob's as well.
You on both.
If there's any questions, or, the board's pleasure.
Those stuff might be starting in the account, with four million dollars?
Yeah, there's $4.4 million set aside.
Which one is the first one?
The, number one.
Okay.
The draws have on there. It says draw one.
Okay, got it. All right, understood. What was the, the total number of draw requests? We've got one here already.
There's, there's a total of three draw requests there. We, that's the solid waste district that submitted to the state.
Okay.
There's three draw requests totaling $1.3 million, $4,311. And we're anticipating, the district is anticipating a bill this week showing up for another million dollars because we've got about six semi-loads of liner, about 500 loads of sand to pay for. It is moving forward.
How, how long between the two things? You've got the first one, so the second one's probably on its way, and then how will that go? Like the third one will come in after?
Our correspondence with the state land is the other two, two and three are in the process of being approved right now.
Okay.
Is where we're at with that.
Is there a chance they won't be approved?
No. No, they're, but that's why.
If they're more, if they're more than this.
Yeah, that's why I would, I'm asking the board to approve these pending the money being in the county coffers. So, if something goes sideways, the county is not out of the money.
Right.
It's just a, it's strictly a reimbursement.
Yeah, I just, if there was some requirement that they could not approve.
Oh, no, we've, we've met everything in their, the district has met everything required
Are we going to do that on an approved motion, or signatures of the board?
I think you just make a motion to approve the reimbursement of those funds that showed That's correct, correct?
That's, yeah. It's, it's like a prepaid, but it's not a truly prepaid because we're waiting for, yeah, waiting for the fund to reimburse.
I move that we approve the three total requests prior to receiving the funds on this with anticipating the funds being here before our next meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
We're in discussion. Derek moved and Don seconded for us to approve the payment of these three vouchers upon receival of the funds and not without from the state.
Correct. Yeah, that's what I, yup. What he said before the next meeting, if it doesn't, would you move that off there?
For the, for the purpose, the reason why we need approval is, is we're anticipating the funds being here before the next meeting so these can be paid. They're going to be received after the first of December, because then, excuse me, I'll need to clarify that, not next meeting, the first meeting in December.
That's, that's anticipated time.
Right.
First meeting in December.
Right, not next.
That's why I was like, next voucher meeting.
Close and clear. Derek's motion please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
Let the board reflect that I sustain and did not vote for it.
Good.
Okay, thank you. Thanks everyone for that. District greatly appreciates that. Next is the consent agenda. Are we going to be pulled off that?
Can we pull off the, the homeland securities since there's so many to explain what they are and?
Give a quick, those, these are the reoccurring ones that Gilbert applies for. The money's there, it's just a recurring from the.
So, what is it used for then? Is it, is just general in his fund, or?
It's assigned to a specific board.
So, these help by radios for all law enforcement, fire district, his office, both PDs, sheriff. They help fund half of his budget. Will you explain your grant?
Oh.
Derek's.
Go on in.
Since there's so many, if you just give us a little explanation.
Okay, so the first one, for $39,392, is for a thing called Trunarc, for the sheriff's department. That is a drug detection type unit. It also can detect precursors for like bombs and stuff, but it basically will be used for drugs, especially like fentanyl. Basically, so, if they find drugs or anything like that, they don't have to touch them. They can use this and it'll scan it and it'll tell them exactly what the drug is. So, it's free, 100% match, or no match, 100% funded. All these grants are 100% funded. So, that's what that one's for. Also, it's a, it can be shared to other agencies. I don't think maybe DCI might be the only one else in the state that has this. So, the other one, uh, is for radios, trying to continue to upgrade. We pretty much have got the sheriff's department where they need to be. Now I'm trying to get the fire departments. So, which has been a step every year. I continue to try to get the fire service between Newcastle Fire Department, Houston County Fire District, and Upton where they need to be and upgrading their radios. So, this one is just my operating one, which is half of everything that I spend the state reimburses from my benefits to my pay to my budget. And the other one is just the alerting system that we use, so.
So, these, these aren't new. These are your ongoing?
These are every year.
Okay.
I mean, I, it's the state homeland security program or grants that I apply for every year.
Okay.
And they're all 100%.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that explanation.
Anything else? Any other questions on the consent agenda?
We got one quick question. The request and funding on that to the beginning funds?
Oh, I sent you guys the description on that. So, I had emailed you guys back in July, asking for your guys' comments. Not many commented. The lady said we need to, even though, even if you don't want them, you guys have to sign that and say yes or no if you want them. And she didn't specify that before. So, we have this, either we have to say yes, you guys want the $7,000 for the people with all the gambling, or no. So, I have this, I have this again, if you guys want to look at the stuff that came along with it. But, one way or the other, we have to say whether we want them or not.
I read it all down, but my question is, we denied them to come into the county on a certain level. Does that have any effect on?
Well, no, they are in, so.
I know there's some.
They can come in to, you guys said they have to go to the places themselves. So, like.
So, you're downing downs?
No. This, I think, has to do with the machines too. So, like, the western just put the steel gangs in theirs. I know that the local bars have them, San Sarmigos have them. So.
You're right, downing downs is the one we saw.
They did come in and ask, yup.
But that one's effective with the.
I don't, this is completely different.
What this is, if we want to accept the $7,200 or not accept the $7,200, in the manner saying this has to be used for gambling addiction type treatment.
So, who's going to apply that and figure that out?
Yup.
I don't know if you would have to contact the public health. It would probably have to say, give their stipulations. Who would monitor it? It would probably be like the hospitals, mental health.
And you would have to go into it somehow.
That company that you just asked about would probably be the better, not to.
Yeah, sure. Volunteers America, that would help. That we as the board side, do we want it, is going to be, isn't it cost us more than $7,200 to track this and deal with it? That's, we have to decide as a board.
Never seen any funding from the state of South Dakota for gambling.
No.
So, I guess, I don't know.
I'm kind of, I'm afraid it's going to cost us more in administrative fees and it's going to be worse.
Okay, I think, Mr. Chair, you're probably correct. If I wasn't there before, I'd want to approve it. I'd want to know how it's going to be applied, who's going to watch it, and how that's going to be monitored. Because, I mean, if we don't have enough, we've got to assume that we have to have oversight of it somehow, and I don't know how we're, who's going to be in charge of it. It's going to be health, or, I don't know. We're just going to sit there?
What I understand of this is, this is something that comes up every year for us. And as far as I know, in the past, we have not accepted.
Well, this is the first time we've had to say yes or no, if we want it.
I, I'm not opposed to the money. I'm just saying, how do we track it? How do we follow up on it? How do we, I'm sure they're going to be following up on it.
I guess my, if, if we want to accept it, we could create a line item for it, and if we don't use it, we could probably turn it back.
But is that going to be like the grants, as we start something like that, whether it is, they would not offer it to you or not?
Is there a, is there a date associated with this one that has to be turned in? Because I don't see anything. I wonder.
That we have to make our decision by? I think it was a while back, and that's why she's following up. But she never specified that you have to make your decision back and she contacted.
Well, maybe we accept it and invite the parties that might be interested in using it and put it on their shoulders to carry the burden of it. And if it doesn't get used, whatever.
Accept at the end and then the entities who would need it, they have to apply to us or what's gone.
Do you know, are they talking about this one?
I think that's kind of wrong, because the county, they contacted you guys.
Put something on your website.
I think so. Is that WS 924 104?
Yes. Maybe that's, maybe we should, maybe we should take it in, go to the mental health, say, hey, this is what we've got for your, for your gambling addiction people.
And if we make it known to Christie also in mental health, maybe it could be open to, if we educate them that we have the money for use in that way, it sounds like it probably needs to be used for therapy or some kind of.
Some kind of gambling treatment.
Yeah, so if we, if we let them know we have it, maybe we should go ahead and accept it. I hate to not accept it, even though it's a small amount of money, because you never know.
Yeah. Board's pleasure. Accept or decline it?
We have to track that.
But there was no information about how to track it, how we have to track it, or what works.
That's all the papers that came up.
To try, I'm sure it's going to be, if you go look up that state statute, we'll show you how that has to be used.
But we could create a line item and then they could.
They could apply for it.
Give their draws to us. And that, I mean, that's an easy way to track it.
Yeah, it's on line item.
That was pretty much just a line item tracking, which is, which is going to take a lot of expense on our part to track.
And if we don't use it by the end of the year, then we would have to return that portion, or can it?
I don't know if it's by the end of the year.
Or by the budget, or.
Yeah, whenever.
Probably by any.
I can double check that.
Your name? Well, we have to decide yes or no. So, we can leave it in the consent agenda, we have to.
Just make a motion?
Yup.
So, I'll make a motion to accept the gambling addiction money under the agreement that it's given its own line item, it's monitored through that for draws.
Second?
We have a motion, probably second, to accept the gambling addiction or gambling behavior, problematic gambling behavior funding, to track as along the line items. We're in discussion.
I would also ask that we, if we're going to put them in the mental health, will we invite them to our meeting and make them aware of what they're responsible for?
All right, we're in the other discussion. Hearing that, all, all good please say aye.
Aye.
All aye say nay. Motion three. Back to the consent agenda. There's nothing to be discussed on the consent agenda. Thank you, thanks y'all. Wanting the consent agenda to be discussed?
Thank you, Marshall. Approved consent agenda. As, so I can then state this, if there is a.
Second? A motion, probably second, to approve the consent agenda. We're in the other discussion. Hearing that, all the papers please say aye.
Aye.
Derek signed the last those. We're moving to public comment. We have a public comment today. Thank you, Chairman.
My name is Del H. Simpson, taxpayer and landlord. Following 9/11, when the Twin Towers fell and 3,000 people got murdered that day, we were terrorized. And out of that terror, TSA was formed, the Patriot Act was formed, and the Department of Homeland Security was formed. The Patriot was used during the Trump administration. That has the secret FISA court in it. When a low-level FBI lawyer falsified a warrant, submitted to the FISA court, and the FISA court acted on it, started the Russia collusion hoax against President Trump. Department of Homeland Security came out of that too. Three years ago, almost, the Department of Homeland Security threw open our borders in this country. As a result, the administration will admit there's 8 million people that we know. And that's not counting the gotaways. The gotaways make up sex trafficking, they make up drug dealers, fentanyl, and they make up Hamas, Hezbollah, all these terrorist groups that now the Department of Homeland Security is. The gotaways make up sex trafficking, they make up drug dealers, fentanyl, and they make up Hamas, Hezbollah, all these terrorist groups that now the Department of Homeland Security is warning us that the U.S. is in jeopardy. Red light, warning. They let them in, they're all over our country, and now the Department of Homeland Security says, now that we let them in and they're here, you're under terror, you're under threat, serious threat. The fentanyl is coming across because the Homeland Security is killing three hundred people a month, and my grandees was one of them. And so, six months ago or so, we had the Narcan pens, right? Everybody got to get a Narcan pen. Department of Health and Human Services, here's grant, we'll give you all these Narcan pens. By the way, we only have a thirty-six month shelf life, so two and a half years, we're going to be throwing these Narcan pens out. Department of Homeland Security let the fentanyl into this country that started the fentanyl crisis, killing a hundred thousand people a year in this country, and then they sold to the Narcan pens. Now, two weeks ago, Department of Homeland Security wants to sell you an app because you're terrorized, because you're in fear. First, they let the people in, they're trying to kill you, and then they say, you've got to protect yourself from these people. And now we want to sell you an app. And everybody's going to have a camera and, and if, so we can hit a button, and, and of course, they dangled students in school in front of us, right? The students are in jeopardy. Of course, our schools are like prisons. You can't get in the front door, they're locked. I can't walk up to that door and get in, I got to ring a buzzer. There's so many cameras, they just updated all the cameras in that whole school, they can lock every door in a school individually or not, they can lock sections down and cannot. What's happening is, I think, I want to ask you not to take on this app. All these freedoms, all these things that we did to protect ourselves because of terror, has taken away our freedoms, each one of them. Every time we do something like this, we give up our liberty, and that's what this app is, okay? We're going to give up our liberties because it was also said, well, then if, you know, if a customer is at the counter and they get a little passionate about their bill or something, then we can hit this button. That's suppression of freedom of speech. I have a right to be upset, I have a right to go into office as long as I don't threaten them, use profanity, I, actually, I could use profanity, I, I prefer not to, but it's part of protecting part of freedom of speech, okay? But we're going to have people say, you know, all right, bang, bang, I'll hit the button because I don't like what you're telling me. In Bloomberg today, the interest on our debt, just the interest on our debt is now one trillion dollars for this year alone, one trillion dollars. And you know where all that, a lot of that debt came from? Department of Homeland Security. I remember toward the end, it was after the election, it was before the new board came on, when we were taking Department of Homeland Security grants, and we were also taking Department of Health and Human Service grants. And I had people in this room saying, we're going to take this grant, I know it's going to go on the back of our children, but if we don't take it, somebody else can, and people laugh, they chuckle about it. We can't sustain the debt, and the debt starts here. These grants that you're taking from the federal government have hooks in it, and that's why we're a trillion dollars in interest, in debt perpetuate. We can't go on, it's not needed. This app is not needed, it's a bells and whistles. It's a community of seven thousand. Just like when, when we went for the Narcan pens, I stood up and said, if you're intervening as fentanyl user, those pens aren't going to do anything. Because the poison is so strong that by the time you inject it, you're dead in forty seconds, till a minute. My grandees had a Narcan pen in her pocket, it didn't hurt no good. It's virtue signal, it's like, all right, we want it, and I'm not faulting anybody for wanting to do something, but this is a created crisis by the Department of Homeland Security. And now they want you to protect yourself because they created, and they're warning that they're cells all over this country now. And in twenty twenty-four, sorry, it's already started, this whole country's screwed up. We can't afford, you've got to start small, I know, it's ten thousand dollars, they're going to take two thousand of that ten thousand startup fee off, right? And then sixty-three hundred dollars a year. It sounds like a little bit, but if you don't start with a little amounts, how can you ever tackle the beta amounts that we need to defund? Grants are not free from the state. After the crash, and I'll finish up, after the crash of two thousand nine, with all these grants that people would say, ah, federal. Every state budget is run, forty percent of every state budget is run by the federal government. And so we live in fear, again, if, and I heard it, we all take this money, whatever that grant was, they're going to not ask us again. We live in fear that somebody's going to get this money or not, we'll take it, and I've heard it in this room, I've heard it. If we don't take it, somebody else will take it, others will take it. Where does the fiscal responsibility start? Don't give up our freedoms in knee jerk reaction, because that's how terrorism really works. You've got thirty-three thousand counties in this country, and everyone's going to, every DH officer is soliciting their county to buy his app. Take the money.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Just for a correction, that seven thousand, that's not a grant, that is money that's collected from the gaming association that is available for us?
Well, I think it was the Health and, so you get the game in permit, and then you got to get a twelve step program to help people with their addiction, that's the grant I was talking about.
Okay, yeah, this money here, that seven thousand is, is collected off of the gaming association.
I appreciate it, thank you, that was helpful.
Thank you for that, I appreciate it. One comment I would like to make, though, I agree with you in part, but you talk about the money for this app. And what are the kids' lives at the school shootings worth? Are they worth that money to you? I mean, that's one purpose that we saw for that particular app, which may have saved some lives. And, and that's where my, and this is like a statement, it's more of a, this is the way I feel about it. I don't know that you can put a dollar amount on the deaths that have occurred in the school shootings. And that's what I would like to prevent in, in my thinking process for it, is just one of those lives is worth that to me, so.
Can I respond to what you said?
Yeah.
This is a public comment, I mean, I shouldn't.
But he did, so.
Yeah, I know, very quick.
If you care about the school shootings, you, you should address the root causes of this, psychotropic drugs. Psychotropic drugs. And if you want to protect, and how much security can you make the, if, see, if you wanted to secure our students, you put metal detectors up, right? That's the ultimate, people walking through, going to have guns or whatever. Then, but you know who doesn't want the metal detectors? The administrations and the teachers, because it's invasion of privacy. I told you, the school is locked up, I mean, you must have been in the school, you can't get in there, all the doors are locked, they can segregate anything you want, they got cameras everywhere, I think if you put down to get a drink in a bottle, there's probably a camera shooting up from the drain. I'm not, I'm just saying, the root causes of the school shootings has nothing to do with the security of the schools. And the school's very secure. And if you want to do it further, if you really want to stop it, arm the teachers, thank you.
Other comments, Henry, open comment.
I'm Henry Nessel, I'm president of Chamber of Commerce, and just a couple of things, this coming Friday at five P.M. is our annual meeting at the Newcastle Lodge. If you're willing and able to, I'd love for you to attend. Our guest speaker is Chuck Gray, Secretary of State. Our next big event in town, we have a lighted parade the evening of the twenty-fifth on Main Street. And this year, we've looked at books and the boards looked at the books, and we found our income to be fairly stable. If you look on Facebook, Facebook, you will see that we have now advertised for a four times a day director. Kind of bring staff back on board to get the Chamber of even moving more forward direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great news, Henry. Any other public comment? Hearing that, we'll move on. Adoption of the Board of Equalization rules. Michael, do you have?
Yeah, this is just, we've done these procedural rules for the Board of Equalization. As emergency rules, a couple of times, we've given the appropriate notice to the appropriate people, and this is the intention to adopt those procedural rules. As permanent rules and an opportunity for the board and the public to make any comment on them or object or adopt or.
Just with general information, what, we're adopting the rules, basically, this will let the county follow in with the state rules, we'll be following the exact same rules the state does.
That's just, because our rules are just a little outdated, and we're just updating them to catch up with. It's just procedure, it's nothing substantive, it's just how you go about doing the hearing and doing the notices and the appeals and.
The whole process will still stay the same, which is the two rules are following the state's rules. Do you have those four to adopt?
Yeah, I have a resolution, and this is the resolution.
Consider. This is resolution number twenty-three dash thirty-two. Resolution, Board of County Commissioners, Board of Equalization, Weston County, Quoniny, to adopt permanent rules. Whereas the Weston County Board of Commissioners, the board previously adopted emergency procedure rules for Weston County Board of Equalization. And they so did on April fourth, twenty twenty-three, and September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three. With adoption of such emergency rules being identical to the rules on both dates, and whereas the board desires to make the emergency rules reference above permanent procedure rules for the Weston County Board of Equalization. And whereas the board has compiled with applicable laws regarding the implementation of said reference rules. Be hereby resolved that detached procedure rules for Weston County Board of Equalization, identical to the emergency rules adopted on April fourth, twenty twenty-three, and September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, for the same purpose are hereby adopted by the Weston County Board Commissioners, Weston County Board of Equalization, and attached procedure rules for the Weston County Board of Equalization, shall now be permanent rules. Your pleasure.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three thirty-two.
Second. And motion to probably second to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash thirty-two, adopting the current Board of Equalization rules. Any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Next is Vaultside update. You and Michael.
All right, finally got a response from, or some sort of communication from Mr. Campbell. Took a little longer because we weren't sure if he was represented or not, so we had to make sure he wasn't, so we could talk to him. Nobody on the hook right now, but anyway, the proposal from Vaultside is twenty percent share of gross profits to the county. Year long term. And they will pay what they should have paid for April, May, June, July, August, and September, and we have to get October in there now, assuming so. But twenty percent year long ways is what the proposal is.
What Vaultside is, that is online record sharing through the clerk's office, and all the documents are reported. Do we need to have a motion accepted to accept your offer?
Okay, at least for discussion purposes.
I want the motion to accept the Vaultside proposal at twenty percent and a year long contract.
I second that.
A motion to probably second it to accept Vaultside's offer of a twenty percent gross profit, twenty percent share of the gross profit and annual contract. Any discussion?
I know we've discussed it a little bit before, but I would say since it's only a year long contract, that doesn't seem to bode well for the company. That they don't want to get into a longer contract, so I think we should still be looking into our other options. This gives us some breathing room, gives us a little time, but I think we should be prepared for what may be coming down the pipe later.
I've been talking to a couple of the clerk clerks on what they do, so I have one company that would have to come in and completely re-scan everything. I have another company, or another clerk that ties in with our Tyler tech system, which would tie into our documents that we currently already scan ourselves, which is what Cook County does. The only thing is, is we would have to scan everything from when we started using this system back, which is a lot of years. Our current scanners that we have are too small, so I possibly may have to buy two larger scanners so that we can scan our books and direct index them ourselves, which would save us having to hire someone to do that. And that would definitely save, we're counting a lot of money to go, I may have to get some quotes on a couple of scanners, come to the board and see, but I have an account set aside for the vault that I can use up.
I have a question to you. If we go down that road, can we charge a subscription fee to people?
Yes, we do that. And what happens is when we download on that night, it directly downloads them right to our county website, and there's still the, and it's just a matter of getting the older documents indexed so that they can search and get the images onto our Tyler tech system. It's just, it would be very time consuming, but if there's downtime, my girls can be doing that, I just got to get a wider scanner.
I just have a clarification question. If we, if, if the county goes this route, that would take a third party business out of the loop on this, and it would be under the control of Weston County only at that point, right?
Well, it's still a third party system because it would be through our Tyler tech system, but it's more.
But that's, that's more your storage and the program that would do this and then link it to your website? But the control of the documents is a Weston County entity at that point, is that correct?
And I do believe the contract says the stuff, the documents is Weston County property and on top of that too, so.
Did we, well, looking into that, do we own the documents that Tyler threw that up, Vaultside has?
Yeah, I believe that old contract, I looked through that again when you guys asked that question, it does become property of Weston County. I think, I, we need, we just need to do a new whole agreement, because the last one was mostly just words on paper that.
It's a terrible.
That didn't help out either side much, so we'll have to get a better contract involved. You probably want to get in there, you want, you guys want to accept the April through October payments as pursuant to the previous agreement, the previous percentage?
When you do, and the motion order, the motion was to accept their offer, is that in their offer?
Yeah, well, it wasn't clear whether they're going to pay twenty percent or. Well, it says I'll go back to March and send payment for those months, but I just want to make sure it's clear that they're going to pay the previous percentage instead of the new percentage, just so there's no.
The previous percentage was.
Oh. Yeah, it was a, it was split, it was around like seventy, yeah.
So, does the motion maker want to word that as prior to the previous agreement? The payment is according to the previous agreement, payment due from the previous agreement is the percentage. Payment due from the previous agreement is the percentage on that initial contract?
Correct.
That's open to second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion?
I'd like to ask Becky, so Becky, if you got a scanner and you started scanning all these old documents, do you think that within a year's time, you would be ready to go forward in a different route when this contract runs out?
Yes, because it's, it's going to have to be, everything from twenty, or two thousand, I believe, is going to work to smooth over. So, it's going to be from the start of...
Would a year be long enough to do that?
It could be, because, I mean, it's all of the books, and then, once they scan it in, then they enter, you know, the legal description, and the grant or grantee, anything pertaining to that document is then entered in, just like then we get a new document, and then they'll put the document number, the page number, the book number, so that then when they go online, all of that information will...
So, maybe we could have you put together, like a goal, you know, some goals, and, and look at the cost of a bigger scanner, and we could revisit this, and...
Have we get a timeline figured out?
Get a timeline figured out.
So, at the next meeting, I'll have, I'll have the cost of, and then if, if it's okay, then my girls can go ahead and get those, and then they can get going on that as soon as possible.
Do you need to make a motion like that, or just wait and see what she finds out?
All right, we've already got a motion on the floor, we'll take care of this motion, and then I would say, just, we can just direct Becky to have that information on the next meeting. Is there any other discussion on the motion on the floor? Hearing that, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Do you allow him, Vault Side, no Michael? The intention's there?
I will, and we'll get a new contract.
How big of scanners are you needing?
They're just like little desktops.
Okay.
Come on, Jim. Come on, Jim. You are up.
Newy Road, Colbert, Bridge, Colbert, probably just down, eventually lost it.
Landowners happy?
I haven't heard any of the ones so far.
Good.
I guess contract trucks starting to shine over at Wester Bay. Got eight trucks right now, we should gain at least one more. If we run eight of them for nine hours a day, it's about ten thousand dollars per day.
Do you, how many days looking at the chiller hole?
Well, I don't know. I'm not going to have to keep that up for the whole project, I just wanted to get enough of it knocked out for the different shit ourselves.
Get the ball covered then.
Yeah. I guess I wanted to ask, you guys want to pick that trucking out of County Road Fund, or if you had another idea there, or what?
This is County Road Fund, will you pay it?
Yeah.
I would, a pretty chunk of change in there, I would be, if I've been catching short on the other projects down the road, I would recommend taking out of that.
Want to make sure we have chicken for you.
And what's the board's pleasure on that?
We're trying to do some blade maintenance best we can, we're having a moment, and it's pretty difficult to go in. Still building out down there, it's slow, but we're in. Looks a lot better than that.
Everything else, all blades up, everybody running good?
Well, we got one that's been down, it should be going this afternoon, I'm going to have to rack up another one, so that's a pretty quick fix. But not, nothing major.
Nothing major. Any other questions, Jim? You all, easy, then. Okay. Well, then, the next up is an executive session requested by Jim.
What statute is this under?
What's that?
Which section is that under?
Well, we have a motion. Yep. I'll make a motion, we're going to executive session number sixteen four, sixteen dash four dash four oh five AII. A motion pro per se to accept it, suspend regular rule, go into executive session sixteen dash four dash four oh five dot AII. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carried.
In addition to the weekly printed version of the newsletter journal, we also promote our community and share important information on our award-winning website, newslj.com, and in our weekly email newsletter, Nuke Now. We also connect with readers through various social media platforms, and invite you to check us out on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. You can even take a look at a recent meeting of the city council, school board, or county commission on our YouTube channel. We do hope that you will go to newslj.com and subscribe today, and we look forward to making all of our great content available to you. But regardless of your level of support, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts for doing your part to preserve a free and independent local press.
Return back to regular session. Caleb is tied up. Planning with his son, so we'll move forward to Fair Ground with David right now.
Chairman, Board? Hey, I've got a couple really quick things. One is Suzie's trophies, we know, we bounced everything out to zero. She came in with another, some plaques and some engraving, it was two hundred dollars. So, I got asked for two hundred dollars to keep it at zero, for the rewards for fair. So, that's, that's one thing. Secondly, I, we talked a little bit earlier, we talked about the computer. The only reason we went through the computer was there's personal stuff on it that was inappropriate, there's personal stuff, and had to do with the lawsuit, and that's the only thing we needed to do. We did have audit, they came in, I thought we had everything, or we got everything, it's not that, because it's not that big, wrong format. We had everything through February in the QuickBooks, which I have the paperwork, we could not get into QuickBooks, when the auditor showed up, they was able to get into it, it was gone. So, Dana, is that her name down here? Dana has agreed to come in and help us get something set up, so we can get the format they wanted in, so that's kind of where we're at with the audit. I didn't perceive any issues with it either today, it's just wrong format. They wanted it in QuickBooks, they get a copy of it electronically, so they could do some sorting and stuff like that. It's, it's just gone, it's just, it's wiped. How or where, I couldn't tell you. So, Dana's agreed to help us get something set up on that, because it'll go pretty quick, because all we have is basically the fair stuff, and that's, that's pretty much what we have from last year. You guys still had all, all the rest of the stuff. Protocol on, I'm assuming there's still a freeze on hiring, we did have one applicant, hopefully we'll have another one, we talked about interviewing her next meeting. What do we need for protocol to hire someone, to find someone?
The freezing hire was on any new positions?
Oh, new positions?
So, you had a existing position that's vacant, that position is still there.
Oh, okay, so we're good if we see someone that fits the budget we have, then we can go ahead and fill that.
Yeah, the phrase, the hiring freeze is on any new positions, where that position's vacated, you're good to go to fill that vacant position.
So, if we found bills, Becky, is some of that from the old budget?
So, what had happened is, the Surphal bill, our bill, and the Fair Ground bill was a complete mess. So, Katrina called over, and our bill had went to pay one of their month's payments. So, Katrina asked for them to please send us the Fair Ground's bill and our bill, so we can get it straightened out. Their bill came back, and it was over a thousand dollars, and we're like, there is no way it should be a thousand dollars, because they pay their billing month. When we looked back, and, thanks, and they hadn't been paying, well, come to find out, they hadn't been, they hadn't been getting their bills, because it was going to Kara's email.
Right, so what I'm asking is, is for those, he said he's got two hundred dollars that we've got to pay, are we going to have to pay on these utilities?
But it shouldn't have been out of the Fair Ground's account, this is out of their other account, their actual budget.
And then my next thing is, is, you know, I'm sure all of us have, but we need to, in my opinion, with these computers, anything that's county-owned, county-owned computer needs to have an administrative password, so that, that's a monitor activity that is not appropriate for the county, and if someone leaves, they can't hold us hostage by locking out of the computers, there needs to be, they have a right to their own password, for sure, but whoever, whether it's IT, or whether it's somebody that's responsible for that, needs to have access to that computer. In any big corporation, any big company, and I've worked for a few, there's always an administrative backdoor, so that someone can't lock you out of a computer. It's not that you give it to each employee, but that person needs to be responsible, so that problems like this can be wiped and cleared after an employee leaves. It also takes up memory space in the computer. Those things need to be looked at, in my opinion, so that we have better security on our computers, because if this was going to an email of a former employee, that email was never eliminated, obviously, so it's still going to that email, and we're finding stuff late, which I think would be helpful to not just the Fair Ground, but anytime we have a computer system that is county-owned, we should have access through administration to be able to get into it, without all of the months of headaches that we've had.
So, they're not, they don't fall under our IT, just like the airport doesn't fall under our IT?
So, we don't buy their computers?
No, they buy their own.
But their emails would be logged.
They're not under ours.
If it's a county email, it would not.
It's not a county email.
So, they're using some of their...
They're under their own.
And that's where these emails came, we...
Well, we just talked about them using a computer that they couldn't have access to, so why?
But they didn't ask, they don't want that computer, because they said they already have it all lined up.
So, I convinced the Fair Grounds, it's not county property, is that what you're telling me, computers are not part of the county property?
It is, but it's not like it is up here, it's not, it doesn't fall under our IT stuff.
If it belongs to the county, we should have access to it, so that we can reset these computers, if that's the case, then, I mean, so we're just chopping everything?
But it's just like, we don't, it's the county's property as the airport, but we don't have access to any of their stuff. It's the county property at the higher district, but we don't have access to any of their stuff.
Are we budgeting for those?
We budget everything for the airport.
In my opinion, we should have access to those computers, at least an IT person, for security reasons, because how do you prevent people from surfing the web? And, I mean, how do you prevent that? I mean, and big companies do it all the time, you get a printout every month that says, they're on the website this long, this, I mean, you don't, we don't know if they're on Facebook, or they're on Amazon, trying to do that stuff. We, we need to tighten up our security with these things, because this is what happens.
And we don't, and we did find those Amazons, and then we did find, and I agree, but being where we're at, when we have like one employee, we got to, we got to be able to jump in on IT, where, where, you know, like you guys, that is a person helping get that set up. We're not hiding anything, you guys have computers, and that's great.
And that's not my, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, you're locked out of a computer, if somebody left, it should be, you should be able to call up IT, and they should be able to get on there, and free up that computer.
See, I don't know if he was really locked out, like I say, when we, when we got in there, we found like four or five emailing accounts. This business might have been seven here, this business was seven here.
Do you have Kara's password?
We have, we have none of the emailing passwords. And that, that was the same way when it came into our, our, our Microsoft and all that, her name was put on the name of that, even though we bought, we didn't know that, we didn't, you know, we didn't do it, but that stuff we need to take care of.
As a board, that's where you guys need to be more responsible, responsible to that.
But we need to have an IT guy that can say that, and say, this is what we would do.
Board should be able to manage that.
So, in that sense, that's where we're at with that. And, and like I say, as far, that's where the audit is, that we have, we're not that, you know, we have a little bit of work to do, but as we're talking, just a couple of days, get regular sent to them. And like I said, Dana's going to come down and help us get something set up on our QuickBooks that we have, so we get the format that they want, so they can do whatever they need to do. They did come up, there's a couple very nice gentlemen came in, looked, and they, they used their passwords to get into it, they had our passwords, so they, they got into it, and they finally found it.
I'm, I'm not so sure, because of ongoing things, and the problems with their computer, and what's on their computer, that it wouldn't be better off for them to start off with a new computer, and at this point, take that computer and mothball it for just a period of time, in case someone needs information on it, that way they could start fresh with a, you know, a, a laptop like this wouldn't cost that much, and may, they could start fresh, and make sure all those things are done properly. Right now, I think they have such a mess, and there's things on there that possibly we don't want taken off right now, that we may need, so...
I guess my suggestion would be, is, you know, you've got your county budget, there, there should be some money in there, where you could buy, out of your, out of your county money that's budgeted to you, not your fair money, but the county money, for your equipment, you know, get yourself, get the Fair Board computer and a system, that's, that's great.
Like I say, we're using that old lap, it's an old, old laptop, is what we have, we're pretty much using it now. We can still get on the other computer, but you can't use any of the programs, because the name was on it.
I would recommend that you, or whoever sets up an administrative straighter account on it as well, so that there is no, I mean, you can log in just as easily as anybody else to log in.
Like I say, we'll have to have someone that has that knowledge, and helps get it set up, yes, I agree.
You said you lost records, is all the records from April gone, April, were that gone, gone, or?
They got into it, and the program is there, and I don't know what he meant by everything, but everything up through February, which we had through the year, they said has been wiped. By whom and how, I have no idea, I need to do that. They actually had, they actually had a backup into September, but then they tried downloading it and putting it on our computer, but being it was owned by us, until then, they could revert, put it in the direction. So, they had had something sent to them in September.
Well, last year's autumn. That's where they, you have rec, so you basically have records up until last September, and then there's, there's this void in here from April till now.
Basically, we have nothing this year. It's, it's kind of where we're at.
To Commissioner Todd's point, an administrator can set that computer up, so that a person, even if it's assigned to him, can, they can delete, but it's not gone.
Right.
The administrator can block that from being gone, so that you can go back on that data and pull it up if you needed to, so.
Yeah.
I mean, that's even more of an argument for having an administrator.
No, I go, I, you know, I'm not, I'm not against that at all, that, because somebody needs to say that, obviously, so.
I don't want to be... I don't wanna be your administrator. I mean, we're just here to do.
Give you some ideas moving forward, how to get.
And that's exactly what we're doing, that's just kind of where we're at. And, and, and like they say, I, I was, we were sending in the, the, uh, was it the statements they was giving us? They was giving us a piece of paper on a monthly basis, we sending a man to get it paid. She wants the, uh, what do you want, you want the statement, right? For your payment, who knows? I say when you, like, go back to the law room, I mean, Surphol.
Oh, no, the, uh.
Invoices. We were getting statements, but that's not what you guys required. And the invoice that we were working, being sent there, we was getting statements. But we wasn't getting up, up every month, if we got one, we got one statement, so we just stole it for one month. We didn't realize, yeah, stop way back here. There again, I mean, they just probably jumped up and said, hey, you guys gotta get this straightened out. And that's kind of where we're at now. So, one other thing. Back when our Skister was not running, we had the drive motors out of it. I went to the boss out the mine and asked him where they was sending their old Skisters. Thinking I could get a couple of drive motors for our, our Skister. He says, he thought about it a little bit, he says, how about if I just lend you guys one? With the intent, they wasn't getting it back, they didn't want us to be able to take it south for profit or anything like that. It was just an old junky Skister is what it was. Well, meantime, we got ours fixed, we got this old Skister. It's got a couple of major issues with it. Like I say, we can keep it as long as we want, as long as we wanna put money into it. I don't believe it's worth putting money into. It's got wells on wells. Um, the main transmission, I mean, hydraulic pump, it's very slow lifting up. They're thinking that that pump needs to be repaired. That's nine to eleven thousand dollars. It is very hard to start. When it starts, it runs. But if it doesn't start, they're thinking that one of the main, the main wiring needs to be replaced in it, which runs three to four thousand dollars. The tires are shot on it. Uh, it, it, like I say, it's in rough shape. It was given to us to use for, for the purpose of, as long, you know, until we got ours fixed. Um, they, the people I talked to says that they get into it, there can be additional charges because they'll want probably more than life insurance. All hydraulic hoses that go to this pump. Otherwise, the motor, it won't be working. I don't know if you guys wanna put, put money into it like that. Right now, it's at a dealer. I can go get it, bring it back, but it's dead in the water. I can get away with the mine, see if they want to just donate it to them for what they have invested in it, as far as looking at it for us. I don't think they have an issue with that. I, it's up to you guys what you wanna do with this thing.
Get out the monitor, the stuff that you.
That's, I mean, that's you as a Fair Board decision.
That's ours, okay.
That's you as a Fair Board decision, not ours decision to make.
Well, it's been brought up by, by past people, but anyhow, that's what it is. We're not trying to hide anything while that, I don't think it's worth it. We're probably gonna just mothball it and say, as long as the mine doesn't care, you take it for what you owe us. If you can get something out of the engine, that's great. So, anyway, back to the two hundred dollars, I need, I wanna request the two hundred dollars we do. And like I said, last time, it's the same thing. This should be the last thing for Fair. I still haven't got the beer can thing from the other store.
Do you think that might be in the other budget? Since there were three things paid out of the Fair budget, we should have been paid out of there.
Uh, you don't write where they're setting it, but that is it. Would you wanna look into that with me? How about if Becky looked into that, could you, there may be some money left in your other stuff to do that with?
In your regular budget? I think a couple things are being out of the Fair budget, that should have been a lot of your regular budget.
Of the county budget.
Okay. Because what I did was I went ahead and paid her, her check for her awards. And we still got a couple of things, we're still kind of holding just because of not being able to balance it out. So, yeah, whatever you wanna do, we could go that way.
I would work with, I would say.
Well, he's already paid it, it's already coming out.
I mean, I'm just holding, like I was before, I was holding some of it, like that same.
Did you pay it out of your search yet, Brooke?
That's the only thing we have is that, is the money that we had for Fair. We'll be zeroing that account down. And that's, once again, I think that's probably the last thing for Fair, with the exception of.
Well, if, if that bill's been paid, we've got several more months before Fair hits here. I would just, I mean, my first thing would be set tight to see whatever hidden stuff is coming up. So we don't address this every month, two hundred dollars, two hundred dollars, two hundred dollars. That, that would be my suggestion, I don't know what the board feels, but it's like. Fair's coming up, you don't need, you don't need to be spending money for Fair right now. Let's just see where this account comes in, when it all works out, see where we're at. If that's, I mean.
If that's what you guys wanna do, that's great, I'll make, I'll make the two hundred dollar dis deposit.
If that's what.
And I will pay the bill, so we get everything paid off. Because we're still holding some of the premium stuff that we're putting for sale.
That's, the board's pleasure. That'd be my suggestion, that way.
We're fine.
When we, when we deal with this, let's deal with this one time to get it done. Got directions on that?
Push me.
Anything else? Thank you, David. No Caleb yet. And we'll just continue, move it on and save a spot for Caleb when he gets here. Next is funding for, how you pronounce that? Global LLC. Yes, wait for Gilbert, if you wanna do that. Just gotta hand it up like it was.
Okay. Um, Jeannie has the handbook ready. There's only a couple of things that we need to decide. And one is how vacation's going to be done. She's gonna send it out to everyone with those options so you can look at it. She's got approval from the majority of the, the department heads. Um, although, in my, in my opinion, this, it's come down now, this is the commissioners to decide. This is a county handbook. It's good that we got everybody's, we got everybody's opinions and ideas. And she worked really hard to do that. And for the most part, it's been approved by them. But their approval isn't really needed, now our approval's needed. So, I'm gonna ask her to send it out to everyone to review one more time. And I'd like to have it on the agenda, our next meeting to actually officially approve it, so we can go forward.
She's reached, all the department heads have reached back to their, those are changes?
Yes, it's all done.
Can I interject?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Um, I just finally had a chance to look at it. My only concern is the HR doesn't need, or the county attorney's office being human resources. I, I to, I, in opposition of that. I believe it needs to be an outside entity and not anything to do with any department in Weston County. Everything else was, you know, typical typos, but.
There's quite a few things on there that I've sent her that she hasn't changed. And the department heads haven't got to visit with her again on it.
Well, it's my understanding she sent out a letter to everybody.
We haven't, we haven't got to talk to her again, so she sent the last one out to all of us.
I'll just, I'll discuss that with her. And we just need to get this done, it's been hanging out there for two years. So, I'll discuss that with her. And if she sends it out, I'd like the department heads to, to make a full effort to get it one more time quickly. So we can go ahead and get it started, so we can start the new year with, with our new handbook. I mean, essentially, there's, there hasn't been any changes except for mostly additions to some of the federal law. And then, um, policy about computers, phones, things like that. I agree with Tina on what you're saying, hopefully, we can do something about that.
If we don't have the budget, how is that going to happen then?
We're gonna have to look, I feel like we're gonna have to look at it seriously. But. That's a different issue, I guess.
Can we, if we're gonna go over this at the next meeting, I would like you all to sit here, every elected to sit here, and go through it with us, with her. And then it can be hashed out and not, you email and not, her not changing this, or you wanting something that you're worried about, then it's in front of all of us. That would be my recommendation for all this. And then, we can sit here and bang it out, hopefully in an hour's time, and maybe get it, something.
Has there been something that's changed in the county that all of a sudden, um, human resources is an issue? Is, is there a legality that needs to take place, or?
I, I guess I don't understand your question.
Well, there, since I've been here for close to twenty years, there has not been human resources. What's the push now?
That's, that's been part of the problem, I think. Without human resources, problems sort of fester and never get resolved. And I think that's what we need to try to figure out, um, making that stop.
Sure.
And I, I agree with you, I think.
Non-pious.
We are supposed to be, yeah, we're supposed to be temporary. And Jeannie's taken on the majority of that load, thankfully. Um, but it, I do think the best is an independent, um, third-party person that's properly trained.
Properly trained.
And.
With the education and, and.
And stays out of it, stays out of it. You know, pop, going up with politics or whatever, yeah, and just does their job. So, I think that's, that's the best. I, that's, that's the reason, I think, um, we, we need to somehow get an HR person so some of these problems that come up don't go unresolved. And we have issues that haven't risen this year that have kind of, probably could have been nipped in the bud quicker if we had somebody like that, so.
I like Nate's idea. Set aside an hour at next meeting, get Jeannie here, get all the department heads. And sit here at, in this room and get it resolved and done. Because this email back and forth stuff is not working, it hasn't worked.
Especially when you can't.
Well, I mean, I, that, that's the board's pleasure to do at the next meeting, that's what I would suggest.
I, I agree with Commissioner Todd, we do need to get everybody in the same room and move forward with it. But I would also like to say that, and I'm speaking just as me, we need to stop making illusions that we're going to all agree on what's in that handbook. It's not, the, the handbook is not, I don't like this, I want this for my department, I don't like this, I want that for my department. It, the handbook need, there's, there's never going to be a point where we agree with everything that's in that handbook. That's not what a handbook is for. So, if that's the goal we're trying to get to, that's never going to be achieved.
And I agree, I agree with that too. I think, um, that's part of the problem. I think, I think we have tried to reach out to everyone, and that's why it's dragged on so long. Possibly because of emails, she's tried to meet with people also. But ultimately, not everybody's going to agree. Ultimately, the people that have to agree on it is the commissioners. We're the ones that need to set the policy for the county. It's really good that we can take everybody's, uh, opinions into it. But if you keep, if you keep giving everybody the chance to give their opinions, what he's saying is true. You'll never get to an agreement because there's too many parties. It's ultimately our responsibility to take care of our county employees. And it's, it's ultimately up to us.
Do we have two extra elected officials, do you agree to come in next meeting?
If court allows, pass the open.
Now, that is a pretty busy, that is a pretty busy court day with Judge Castano, so. I don't know, uh, if you could help us out and maybe arrange.
Well, I was gonna try to do it, maybe after lunch.
Oh, well.
Will that work or no?
I have to look at the calendar.
Or you just give me the calendar and then we'll go from there.
And maybe we'll have to put it out for two meetings because of your court.
Well, and it's Thanksgiving week two, people may be gone.
That might not be a good.
So, we might go the first weekend off number.
We're getting ready for jury trial too, so.
But it'd be very nice if we could get it.
Absolutely.
Locked up this year, so we could go into next year with our new handbook and have less confusion.
Well, and that'll give the department, or the elected officials a chance, hopefully, we're gonna need to want it.
So my suggestion is just, um, get it finalized, get everybody's opinion, get a finalized version. And then, once you guys do that, just vote on it and yea or nay. I know where we're at, just continuing to settle on this.
I guess if you work with a team on a court schedule, if it don't work out, second meeting in November, at least for sure, the first meeting in December.
And with that, I'll, I'll tell Jeannie, um, not to insult anybody or make anybody mad. But we will put a date, a deadline of comments and, and everything. If we're going to try to get this goal done by the end of the year, we have to do that. Okay?
Got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, you're up, go.
All right, so you guys, the sheriff, I was gone, so the sheriff brought up the easy change program. Um, we did a demo, uh, once, did a demo with some of the, uh, elected officials, department heads that were able to attend. A few weeks ago. Everyone likes it, they think it's beneficial. Um, you know, Stanley has some good concerns. Uh, he's, I'm not gonna say he's wrong on a lot of that. I am not with, I have very little ties to Homeland Security. So, if anyone has any concerns with that, that's neither here nor there. So, this company is not, has no ties with Homeland Security. So, um, this would upgrade our security system. We have a very inadequate security system in our courthouse and zero security in our annex building. This is something we need to do, and the cost is, to me, is relatively cheap, especially when you're talking about protecting what they're said, our county employees, it's just a second deal. Uh, I know funds are limited, but when it comes to protecting somebody or a human life, then I think it's something that you guys really need to find a way to do. So, um, it can be programmed any way we want it to be, protected any way we need it to be. It's more than just an app. It can go on everyone's laptop, computer, laptop, any device. I mean, I'm, you can ask me questions, I can, I can even probably get in below the price even more, if, if we need to. But we really, I think we need to get working on this because we could probably get this installed within the next month or two months. Because when the schools go down for Christmas break, there's their slow time. So they could probably come up with, they could even put all of our SOPs into the system. Um, it has that chat function. I mean, there's just so many things about this program that, uh, are so beneficial to us that it's just, to me, it's a no-brainer. Well, I've seen the demo, I mean, I don't know how many times now, the school's looking at it, the high school's looking at it. Uh, Upton School, uh, Clark has, has been on the demo. Uh, Lincoln County's doing it and loving it. So right now, uh, to set it up and everything, it would be eight thousand two hundred seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents. And then yearly, it would be, uh, for the courthouse, it'd be four thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars and ten cents. And then for the annex, it would be one thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and ten cents.
Six thousand a year.
Yeah, so six thousand a year. It would tie into our camera system. It would probably, uh, during our last demo, with our new upgrade that's coming in, the demo could even tie into our panel problems.
The law, so Gilbert, do you have any idea what, does anybody have any idea what dispatch is not gonna start costing us? Every year? And secondarily, so we have a grasp of that number. I don't know what hasn't been, it's probably not elsewhere. I mean, I assume that.
I mean, I assume that this is, six months from now, this is still gonna be, right?
Oh, I'm sure it will, yeah.
So roughly three hundred fifty thousand. We put extra in there, but once we go to the joint powers, we will not pay dispatch fees. Everything will go into there, and that will include what we help, well, it'll all go to the joint power for, and that includes what we'll pay for, uh, the dispatchers, the calls, everything.
Instead of sixty thousand a year, it's gonna be roughly three hundred and some thousand a year. So that's, I mean, okay this year, next year, but four or five years from now is where I'm really concerned, like.
This is, this is something also that, um, I can also, with the next set of SHSD grants, I can apply for, to pay for, grant-wise. Say, come April, when the grant comes around, I can probably pay for the security system with the grant. So, um, the two thousand they're willing to take off with the setup fee is good, if we can agree on it, I think it's good.
I'm, we're, we're projecting three hundred fifty thousand for dispatch, that's projected. We have, we do not know in reality where it's gonna be. That's, that's my concern. Uh, we just signed the vouchers today for ten thousand dollars of point, court-appointed attorneys that we have to pay for. We have no idea where this is gonna go, it's just being blown out through the roof. Uh, we're looking at getting a forty-three thousand dollar hit, a bill, from the state to pay into the sheriff's pension funds. Uh, we just took a hundred thousand dollar hit this year on our Blue Cross and Blue Shield. Yeah, our budget went up four hundred thousand. I mean, we're looking at, that four hundred thousand that our budget went up, is gone in uncontrollable costs that we do not have control of. I'm, I'm really concerned about, at what point in time do we have to start looking at what is required by state statute that we have to provide for our citizens in this county? And what's not statute we have to provide for? Because I'm afraid we're gonna get to that point one of these days in the near future, that we're gonna have to start cutting some of these costs that are not state statute required. And I really don't wanna get into, I personally don't feel like we, I wanna get this county tied up into the subscription fees and other fees that we have no control over, that are not statutorily required. That's, that's my take on this, is where we're at with the financial. And I'm not looking forward to next year's budget.
Becky, question for you, in that figure, are we figuring in the E nine-one-one money? Because didn't we already transfer, is that, what does that mean, transfer?
So that has nothing to do with this?
Right.
So no, that doesn't include this?
So that, the three hundred fifty thousand doesn't show in E nine-one-ones funds continuously? That, that can tend to come off the top.
That is strictly...
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Funds, debudgeted, strictly for dispatch, of what are costs to the joint powers.
When does that transfer over to the joint powers?
As soon as they send us a voucher for it. But they, I was watching last night on the council meeting, and they were having a problem getting their EIN number, because they had to condense how to put joint, joint powers here on their line. And then, once they get that, then they can get their bonds, which then they can get their accounts and stuff, so.
Yeah, and my point was, it's just what, on the chair, that is, we're not figuring that in there, so that is gonna come right off the top, what's up?
And to piggyback on what you said, as the budgeting officer, we have, the problem that we ran into with our budget this year is all of our grants offset the budget, because those funds keep getting depleted. Um, so redundancy is something that we have to start looking at. We're funding these with the stuff, things with the grants, but then those grants go away, and then the county has to pick it up with our own budget.
All right. I think the chair's very accurate in saying that we're gonna have to figure out a way to do more with less, and I think the system's awesome, you already know that. I think it's really important, but I, when you suggested that grant, that might be a better way to go, so that we're not, because it's tight, it's tight everywhere. We keep picking from, you know, financial admin and this and that, but those funds are depleted fast.
If you guys pay for the setup fee, and the sheriff and I split the yearly cost? Because I, I, I think that protecting, the, the annex has no security, and they get people going there yelling and screaming at them, and some of these things, it's, it's not gonna be on my hands. And if you guys turn down protecting them, it's on my hands, it could be.
I, I think it's important to have security, I, I...
They have a radio, no cameras, no nothing.
If it comes out of your budget, Brian's budget, it still comes out of the county budget. I mean, that's, it's just, it's which pot we're pulling out. But our pot of money is getting very tight, it doesn't matter which way it goes.
I mean, from, from my perspective, it's a point where, you know, we may have to look at making personnel cuts. And, you know, that's, that could be a possibility.
How do you pronounce that?
Ageix.
Ageix? Uh, do we have a background on, on the Ageix School of LLC in any way? Was it, uh, or was it founded, who's, I mean, is it privately owned, or what?
I don't have a, them, I, the guy that I work with is originally from Star Valley, and he works out of Utah, and he does a lot of work out east, and he is currently, got Lincoln County and some, uh, their schools on board, and their hospital, he's getting them on board, and that's where I heard about it.
And that's another excellent point. We don't, not sign AR, but we don't wanna fall into another vault side situation, um, where we don't know much about it. I think the system is, is definitely...
The Lincoln County's run plenty of drills, uh, the sheriff has played, is, is, they did it at Wise Cop, I think? Where they, uh, did demonstrations there, that's where he learned about it, was, was there. So he knew about it before I did. I want to take three time?
I think we all agree, I, I think it's a great system, and I'm really hoping our school system will, will take it on, um, in particular, and I would like us to do it. I just don't see how we, we can do that right now.
They, uh, they don't need it to the first responders, uh, but we'll, uh, I'll find a way somewhere, somehow else.
I'm, I'm not sure anybody would have an issue with the actual system if we didn't have to pay for it. That sounds like a terrible thing to say, but, um...
That's just the way it is.
The continued funding, that's, the upfront funding, one thing to deal with, but the continued funding every year and subscriptions down the road. We know, we all know a subscription fee that never went down. You know, that's, that's, that's where the, my, my concern issue, Tom, is, is down the road costs.
I'll, uh, I'll find another way.
Thank you.
There's all kinds of questions, but the main question is, do our citizens want this? So let's have it come out.
And there's more to it than that.
There's a lot more to it.
Um... In, but we've seen, it's sort of been a, a perfect storm, um, after the newspaper, me primarily suggested a few years ago, the conversation needed to be had. Everybody thought, I was saying, the move needed to be made. And even if you make the move, you're talking about, I think realistically, probably a two-to-four-year transition. You know, a lot of the people who talk about, oh, people's jobs and everything, this isn't something you do overnight. E, e, even I think when you decide to do it, what you do is you start a clock. Hell, we've seen shifting from city landfills to regional landfills takes two decades, for crying out loud. I don't think it should take that long, that's ridiculous, but...
Next is, uh, new business, associated on training, Mary Martin.
Um, we had a strategic planning session that we all agreed on, uh, with Mary Martin, and I wish everybody could have come. It was very, uh, good training. Um, she's so knowledgeable about statutes and board training, board meetings, how things should be. It, it's always awesome, and it's free to use her. So I don't think you can go wrong ever having her do any kind of training. Um, she has so much experience. We were able to, um, go through this strategic planning, and we actually set, um, we actually did a mission statement, and a vision statement, and some possible goals. We looked at goals that were free, or wouldn't cost very much money, but would effectively help us be more transparent with the community, and, um, help make us more professional in our, in our meetings and how we do things. I sent those to everybody, um, to look at that wasn't, weren't able to come. And so I, I didn't put this on the agenda, so I guess I'm, I'm, do, does anybody have questions, or I wanna do the look at it, to see what you thought?
Some of the things we're already doing, like meeting with Blue Cross Blue Shield, through the, uh, the benefits that, benefits through the payroll, it's what, twice a year that they come in, now they come in.
We have, we have. Um, so just once.
Okay, they come in.
They come when it's time to re-ear.
See, we, and we can't, we've tried to get them and demanded them to come in at our schedule. They, they come in when they come in. We don't have a, we don't have...
And that's just, that's a goal that we can talk about. I think we need to have a little bit more oversight on that, and, um, encourage, um, everyone to know that there's an actual set opening enrollment time from this date to this date every year, you know, those kind of things. Um, it's confusing right now, because I feel like that should be part of human resources, and we don't have a human resources person. But, um, those are just, those are goals, um, suggested things that we can work on, to show that, um, if we work as a group and set goals and timelines, sometimes that can force us to get things done that we should get done. Um, I, I, I would like to make a motion to approve the, the mission statement and the vision statement, so we could put it on the website under, with some kind of commissioners.
The other thing is, is that we, we all agreed, as far as I know, um, we all agreed to set that up and get that done. Um, I realize that things come up, but the other part of that is, is if I get things come up and you can't show up, but that also then wastes the time of the ones that do show up, because then we go through discussions of, well, I wasn't there, and I didn't really have any input on it. And if we're gonna go to these meetings and set them up, it's kinda like the budget meetings that we, that the former, our former chair made, that nobody ever showed up for, um, and didn't really notify anybody. If, what's the point of approving it if we're not going to attend it? I mean, I don't know what we could, what we intend to accomplish, it, it almost seems like spinning our wheels. It was kind of embarrassing for, actually, to have only two people show up for a meeting that we all approved.
I'll say, I bear his motion for discussion, please. I, I like, uh, sort of what you got accomplished here, with it, here, but, um, I guess as far as like, we, I just got this Thursday, and I've been through it. I'd see a few holes personally, that I, I don't quite understand how we're gonna do that. So I guess I'm not really wholeheartedly on board with voting yes to accept it today. I guess the, because, I mean, unless the goals aspect is separated from it, I guess, would be, because a lot of those, I mean, who's to say Blue Cross Blue Shield is gonna be our insurance company? Um, for one, or we don't have an HR person. We, you know, how are we gonna afford an HR person? Are we gonna fire somebody to replace that position of an HR person? I guess that's probably some of mine, and maybe, that being said, I, and that's why I wanted to do this in the discussion part, was, I think there's, there's good stuff here, and I don't wanna kill it. I think it's a, it's a starting point to work from, and let's work with it, maybe, and see what we can come up with, but it sounds, right?
Well, I guess I, the goals are essentially separate, because those are things that we can workshop, work together. Um, but the mission statement, vision statement, um, we worked very hard on those, and I feel like they show the value, they show our values as a commission, and what's important to us. So I guess that's the ones I would make a motion to approve.
Mission, vision, and values, I, I think they're great.
I think, um, and, uh, it didn't take us very long to do that, once we started talking about it. Um, and I felt like what we came up with encompasses all of us, because I think we still, we may disagree on things, but those are things we do agree on. And so, goals are separate, goals are things we can work on together. Um, but it was a, it was an exercise to show us that we, we can set goals, and, uh, set goals with deadlines to force us to look at those issues and get something done about them.
Well, I've got a motion for state of Florida for discussion. I'll put my two cents over there right here. Today, I would vote no on it. It's not that I'm against it. If we're gonna vote on that, I would like to see that printed on our next meeting's agenda, so the public knows where we're at. You know, that way they can see what, what the missions were, what we've come up with. That way, it's more open to everybody else. This is not just our little, what we've got beside here, this is our mission goal. This way, it's, it's actually on our agenda before the meeting, people can look at and see. You know, it's not, it's not that I'm against the mission statement and the goals, is, I would like it to be presented that way, then I'm, then I would be in favor of it. That's, then I would vote in favor of that, you know?
I, I would be okay with that, to put them on, uh, actual printing out, to be, uh, added to our next agenda, and to approve that on our next agenda.
Yeah, I, uh, I was actually gonna recommend that we read it right now, but, but that being said, I think that Ed's suggestion is probably more valuable, because it may bring some opportunity for values that were missed, and, um, other, other things that we, that aren't on it right now, and give us commissioners another, a couple of reasons to think about it, too.
Okay.
I appreciate...
The, the other thing that, that we talked about during that, of course, was, um, bylaws and meeting procedures, and we are able...
Dr. Trump, hold a second.
Yes.
We have a motion on the court, roughly seconded, to approve the, the goals and mission statement. Is there any other discussion?
I think that we exempted the goals.
Can we, can we, yeah.
Okay.
Just, I hear the commissioner, Todd, that, that's a kind of a work in progress.
Can, can I pull back my motion until next time?
Do you wanna present a motion?
Present my motion.
Let's give it a second. Okay, the motion's being...
And we'll put it on, and you could put that on the agenda for next time, please.
I just wanted, I just wanted to get that motion going, so...
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, go ahead now.
The other thing I, I did, forgot to mention was, we did talk about the meeting procedures and bylaws, and you've seen the Teton County ones before. Um, she said that we could use those, we can adopt those, uh, there's no, um, there's copyrights on it. Um, we can adopt those and amend those as we see fit. Um, other counties have done so. So that's something that we can work on. Hopefully, by the end of the year, we can do that. Okay? Thank you.
Need to get them back, the, those back in front of us, so we can look at them, review them again?
Yes.
Okay. Is that all you had? A copy on that?
I think so. Do, do you have any comments about it?
I have, I have.
Okay.
Okay, well, we will stop right there. And since Caleb's here, we will bring you in.
Thank you, commissioners, for your patience and, uh.
No problem. We know things come up.
Yeah, so I'm, uh, got poked in the eye this morning and it turns out it was a little bit worse than I thought. I had to get better at that, but he's fine.
He'll be okay?
Yeah, he's, he'll be just fine.
That's the main thing.
Yeah, eye injuries always hurt much worse than they really are, so, but they're very much a nuisance. So, anyway. Um, well, first of all, I wanted to start out just giving you an update on the Mallow project. Um, so I have been working with the Mallow Board. Um, and I was trying to remember when I was in here the first time that I talked to you about this. It's been, this has been a process and probably a year that we've been working on this at the side.
Gideon was in here. That's been over a year.
Yep. So, uh, I have good news. We have contract signed for, uh, the fuels treatment. And that is an 11 acre treatment and that will be the slope behind the lodge and the cabins at North Basin Slope. And then at the top of the slope, if you've been up there where that old water tower is up there, there's kind of a fuel break that's been cut. And that was cut in about 10 years ago and then it goes south from there, kind of follows along the state line and, uh, um, matches up with a continued fuel break out on the Forest Service and BLM lands out that way. So what we're gonna do is we're going to continue an additional three acres on the top of the ridge coming down towards that pond which is on the neighboring property to the west. And so basically what they'll do is it'll create a field break across the entire top of that ridge line on the backside of that, uh, um, lodge and cabins and the property there. So be a total of 11 acres, um, and that should be starting hopefully this weekend. Um, Juan Flores is the contractor that got the bid for that. And, uh, so he's gonna be hopefully starting on it this weekend and, and, uh, hope, he is hoping to get it done this fall. It'll just depend on the weather. Up there, they can get two or three feet of snow pretty fast and so we'll see what happens. But so far it's been a nice fall, so I think he'll be able to get some good work done on that. And, um, and then, let's see, so, and I guess if you want specifics on the bids and all that kind of stuff, I can go into that. I have a home FT card you want me to go into on that. But I worked with the Mallow Board. They accepted bids and I worked with them to review those bids and then they selected one and so on and so forth. So I think we received four bids altogether.
It, it, it's a fuel reduction and a fire break. Is that all the same, same contractor you moved?
Yes. Yep, that'll all be one contract, yeah. And they also contracted with Juan to also burn the piles as well. Um, and he's going to machine pile what he can, uh, but a lot of it, especially on that slope, is all gonna be, there'd be a lot of heated piles. So, um, so that means a lot of smaller piles, as you know, you know what that work is like. Um, but, uh, so he's contracted to do the burning as well. Um, I talked to State Forestry. They thought, you know, there's a chance we might be able to get them burned later this winter, spring. It'll kind of depend on how much moisture's in the wood and so on and so forth. Um, there are some old slash piles out there. We're gonna try and get those burned as well along with these, these piles and try to get some of that cleaned up too. Um, and so, yeah, I'm really excited about it. It's gonna be a good project. Um, and so then moving on from that, um, we also, or I should say, the Mallow Board signed a contract with Nyman also to log part of the Mallow property. I went out with one of their sales reps, or, or, I'm not really a sales rep, but one of their representatives and, uh, um, you know, we walked the Mallow property and kind of identified some areas that would be good to log. And, um, Nyman is working with State Forestry. They're logging some of the State Forestry property to the south. They're logging on the legend group next door where that large pond is and some of that country. And, um, and it works out really well to add Mallow in there because the last time this was logged, Mallow is really the best access coming, um, coming out of a lot of that country to bring the logs back out. And so they have an agreement as well that the logs will be coming out through the Mallow property. Um, and the hope is that, or the plan is at this point, they'll be starting the logging in December up there. Um, they would obviously like to get up there sooner, but the neighboring property uh, didn't want them in there during hunting season and so that kind of precluded them having to wait until, uh, December. And so it'll kind of depend a little bit on the weather up there and what have you as, as to whether they can get it done before they get too snowed out up in that area. But, uh, but both of those are on track and they're happening and so that's really exciting. That was my initial, initial goal was wanting to come to the commissioners, come to the Mallow Board to provide you some options to manage the timber, manage the forest up there, obviously mitigate wildfire concern. Um, but also, you know, just being good stewards of the property as well. So, um, I've watched property with Dick Terry from State Forestry. We talked about, you know, what specs and what, uh, you know, procedures because we are changing a little bit up there because that slope is primarily, uh, subalpine for, or spruce. It's predominantly spruce. Whereas most of the things we do are typically ponderosa pine. Um, spruce is a little bit more prone to wind shear. And so we've drawn out some, some specs that are specific to this site that State Forestry has approved and that's what we're following. So we're not going to be taking, you know, the larger trees off of that slope. And we're going to be leaving it a little bit more dense than what we would normally do for a field treatment. But again, the concern is if we start cutting too much, the wind's gonna take the rest of it pretty soon. It's not gonna be as beautiful as it is now. So a lot of what we're gonna do is we're gonna go in there and clean up a lot of the downed and dead stuff. Um, and a lot of the regents, a lot of the smaller trees that are coming up in the understory and a lot of the brush, the juniper that's starting to come back, we'll take that out and do what we can to mitigate the fire danger there. So, um, so that makes me happy and Mallow Board members said they felt really good about that. And I appreciate your support as commissioners for that too. And I'll keep you posted on it, but I'm excited that it's finally happening after all the time we've talked about it.
On that fire break like, like 10 years ago, has there been much regrowth into that or is it still pretty good?
It actually still looks pretty good, yeah. Most of the regent that's come in is Aspen, uh, which isn't really a fire concern, um, and is really actually kind of, kind of cool if you had a chance to, to go walk up in there, you know, as that trail kind of goes out, you know, south of, of the Mallow camp there, um, the Aspen has really come back really thick. Um, and that was one of the things that I thought about too. I was like, well, we're up, while we're up there, do we need to address that? And I really didn't find any, so I think we're good for now. So, yeah, there may be some thinning that needs to be done and some cleanup after the property's logged. And I, and I was, I told the Mallow Board that that might be something we want to revisit. Um, you know, once the property's been logged and we get a better idea of what's left and, and if there's some more cleanup or thinning that needs to happen beyond that. But, uh, I'll keep you posted on that too. I'll probably have Dick or somebody from State Forestry come up to or look at it and see what their thoughts are and we can make a recommendation moving forward that, that too, so.
Have any questions? Caleb?
I do also have our annual report as well. Um, so we were, we put together an annual report every year. Um, so I've got copied that for you. So our annual report and then our annual plan of work as well. Um, I should have one more. Oh, yep, there you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, so that's got our annual report in there for what we did over the past year. Um, and then our annual plan of work as well, um, is in there and that's what we're working on currently. So our fiscal year is July 1st to June 30th. And, uh, so that's what we operate on. And, um, this will be on our website as well, you know, for, for anybody to view. Um, and, yeah, just trying to let people know what we're doing out here. Um, a couple of things I did want to give you an update on, we did hold Housing Waste Day again this year. We held it in Upton this year per the request from the, the town council up there. And, uh, it went really well. I thought for, you know, for the size of Upton, I, I definitely expected, you know, to have less material probably, but, um, and I, and we did. Um, but it was steady though. I mean, we had people coming through the whole time. And, uh, the best part about it was that we had the FFA kids from the Upton FFA come and help. And, uh, Rachel told them that they, if they wanted to go to the Nile Stock Show, which was later in October in Billings, they had to come and help that day. And so we started with like three kids. By the time we were done, I think we had about 12. I had to call Jones Supermarket and, uh, and order some more hamburgers for lunch.
It's a good problem.
It is a good problem to have. Yep, I was happy to do it. They, and those kids did a fantastic job. And the town of Upton and the citizens were fantastic. We had great support and, uh, um, and, and I just want to let you know as commissioners that I'm trying, and I keep telling this every time I visit them, that I try not to get sucked into the Newcastle bubble. It's really easy to do. And, uh, cause where I live, this is where my office is and, and, uh, so we're working hard on that. And hopefully we will find some more opportunities to partner with Upton and, and make sure that, uh, that they're included. We did have several people from Upton take advantage of our well water testing day. And we allowed them to drop those off at the town hall there and we took them up on our way to Gelecht. And, uh, so we caught a lot of people taking advantage of that. Um, so really excited about that. Um, and got some other projects in the works here too with running game of fish and forest service and stuff too. So I'll keep you guys posted on that. We also recently hired an office admin. So my hope is that I'm going to be out and about a lot more because I'm not doing budget and paperwork and board meeting prep and all of that, um, as much now. And so that's gonna free me up a lot. Uh, we hired Erin Darlington Witcher. You guys know her. Um, she's been fantastic. Uh, the only thing that complaint I have is that I didn't do it sooner. She's been great. She's been wonderful to have and it's great to see the district grow. And, uh, yeah, I think that's what I wanted to update on. And I am planning on trying to be here more often, probably like once a quarter and maybe more often depending on projects and programs and things that are going on. And by having, I try to keep you guys more up to date on what we're doing and, uh, and, and also my board has expressed interest in having you guys come to our board meetings as well. I know you and I talked a little bit about that, but, uh, be happy to have you. Um, and, uh, our board meeting actually got moved to today this month because we're gonna be out of town next week, right? State convention, but, um, but it's typically every second Tuesday at 3 o'clock at my office. And, uh, happy to have you there and, uh, come and ask questions, see what we're doing. And like I said, I will make an effort to be here at least once a quarter, if not more, to give updates and, and keep you more appraised as to what we're doing. And, uh, yeah, just, we appreciate your support and efforts and and excited to work together on this Mallow project and get that done, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're always welcome to show up for our meetings.
Sounds good. I will definitely be doing that a lot more. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Caleb.
I can do that, yep.
I can do that. Back to our, uh, new business. Update on the BLM meeting.
So, um, we had a three hour meeting on the 25th of October with BLM and there was probably 40 people involved, I would guess roughly. Um, there was 20 in the room and, uh, and at least 20 on the, that were attending over Zoom. Or Teams or whatever it was. But, uh, I think it went pretty well. Uh, uh, chat with the, the new director here at BLM all the time, maybe over a year now, but, um, it was a good meeting. Uh, I'm gonna give you guys a quick report on something that opened my eyes. Uh, about 10 or 15 years ago, there's a piece of ground down in Niobruck County called Spanish Diggings. And with the swipe of three pens, they, and this was all BLM ground, don't take us the wrong way. It wasn't a grabbing private ground, but they basically converted, I don't know, an additional, and this is gonna be wrong, but 3,000 or 4,000 acres to an, to an already existing site that limited, um, a number of things on that BLM ground. And those are in the works today with other properties in this area. The Weston County isn't on the large end of that by any means. Another county is getting, uh, a lot, a lot more of a piece of ground looked at. But, uh, it's good to see that not, it's not the swipe of the pen this time. I think that, um, they're coming to the table and actually listening to, um, everybody's concerns. There was a good showing from Weston County from all the different, um, State Forestry, um, Caleb's office, uh, all the different county commissioners, well, three of, of the different counties commissioners were there to say their piece on it. And I would say from my feelings at the meeting, um, anybody concerned with their BLM ground in, in the northeast corner of Wyoming, as far as the cooperatives are concerned, it's very much being kept an eye on. And everybody's in, in pretty mutual agreement that we'd like to see those lands as usable as possible as long as we can. And unfortunately, this, this is gonna be a year long process, I think. Didn't they put it out about a year before we'd get a final?
It was already been going for close to a year.
Yeah.
Yeah, this whole resource management plan update, yeah, it's, I think it's what, December of next year, I think, is what they're shooting for to hopefully have a final plan, you know, approved, yeah.
Yeah. So, end of the day, it's possible that, that the federal government will say, we don't care what you think and this is the way it's gonna be, but everybody's putting their foot in the door to at least raise our concerns as community citizens and people that actually live in the area where it's taking place. So it's gonna be another year out before
Yeah.
everything happens.
So we'll have the draft RMP, uh, Resource Management Plan in April. And, uh, actually, yeah, I think we'll be able to make comments as cooperating agencies, which would include the counties later this year. Wait. Now I don't remember that one. But we'll have the draft in April, the final in September and then the final record of decision by December.
Yeah.
And there'll be more opportunity for public comment next year as well. After it gets released in April, I believe they'll have a public comment period as well. So we'll be able to hold more meetings and they'll be able to take more comment. Similar to the meeting that we held here a couple of months ago for the BLM hold, so.
And then, and it's not just that this is what we want and this is what you're gonna get. They are providing options, so I think, um, the, the participating agencies, including Drew, um, everybody's keeping their eye on it and trying their best to ensure that we have good usage of our, uh, federal grounds in the future, so. It's huge.
Did they say how long the public comment period is gonna be open?
Caleb, you might have remembered. Caleb, your call, how long they said the public comment was gonna be open?
You know, I, I don't remember and I didn't write that down specifically. Um, I know we should have, as cooperating agencies, we should have it in January of 2024 and then they're gonna give us 30 day comment period, so they'll be due in February. Um, I didn't write down how long the comment period is gonna be for the public. I don't know if it'll be 30 days or 60 days. That part I'm not sure. I'll have to double check that, so.
It seemed like it was 60.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm leaning towards. 30 days is, it's not as bad when it's just cooperating agencies because we've already been in contract, been working together. They can get it back to us, but the public comment period, that takes a little longer than to get the word out and get people familiar with it and looking and reviewing it, so. Yeah, I do think it's 60 days, but I'll have to double check what you're reading.
Look, that's just how big a document they drop on us, you know? 10,000 pages, you know?
Yeah, I, I have seen it. I can't remember how many pages it is. Um,
It's a lot of map, mapping.
Yeah, there's a lot of maps and stuff. I mean, the actual portion that you actually, you know, would read and navigate. Yeah, there's a lot of maps and stuff. I mean, the actual portion that you actually, you know, would read and navigate through, it's, it's not terrible. It's no, it's not, it's no 10,000 pages. It's nothing like what they put, you know, forth at, you know, the US Congress where they're, you know, write a health bill that's, you know,
Not like that.
You know, the same size as the entire Harry Potter novel series, or something like that, you know?
Well, it's not like the Rock Springs RMP was, they wrote that.
No, it's not that bad, you know? And, and we did talk about that, and they, and after the, the public comment meeting that was held, they came prepared to talk about the Rock Springs RMP, and, and I appreciate that. I did. They had people from the state office that were on Zoom that, you know, obviously, there's only so much they can say, because a lot of this is coming down from above and, and what have you. But I was very appreciative that they prepared as much as they could, and they had people there, and they weren't just making a statement. I mean, they were open to questions and, and, you know, comments. And, and it was, and I really appreciated that, because I think there's a lot of concern, well, I know there's a lot of concern that what's happening at Rock Springs is going to happen here next. Because our plan is the next one that's coming up, right? And, and in fact, we had this conversation yesterday with, at this meeting that the Wyoming Stock Growers hosted, that man, what Ranch Management Succession Planning Meeting they held. And Jim McGagnon from the Wyoming Stock Growers got up and was talking about some of the legislation and different things and bills and issues he's been working on lately. And this Rock Springs RMP came up, and he said that he's working very closely on a task force to help address that. And that one of their big concerns is just what we are just talking about, that, you know, what plan is gonna be the next one to be highlighted, basically. And so they're working very hard to not allow that precedence to be set, because that's a really big concern, is that if this one is allowed to go through without being contested, that the next one is going to happen, and pretty soon, they're gonna start just, it's gonna be a domino effect, right? And so we did have discussions about that. I don't have concerns about our local BLM folks. I think they're very much in tune with what's going on and what we're trying to do. And for the things that they're not, I think they're willing to listen. Like you said, I, I think genuinely they are. But yeah, unfortunately, we have those above that aren't always in the same boat, so.
Anything else on the BLM meeting update? Any questions?
Move on. Did you need me for anything else?
Thank you, Caleb. Oh, yeah.
26th of last month, Maya asked me to come down to Cheyenne testify. He had to be back east in front of the Joint Appropriations Committee. It's not even legislative, but what they're looking for, what they're doing is to move forward with, present, prepare a bill for the legislative coming up. 20-some years ago, there was funds set up for the law enforcement retirements, like, which covers sheriff. It's set up a little different than all the rest of Wyon retirement, because the way it was set up, you could retire at any age if you had your 20 years in. Or there were some different guidelines if you had a certain age and so many years. That was set up 20 years ago. They revisited, and all of a sudden, they're mass panicking, it's upside down, it's not funding, so. We didn't, our legislators didn't look into this 10 years ago when the state was flush with money, and they're looking at it now. They're looking at coming across is a 5% increase across the board, which would end up, our account would be like $43,000 annually. And that 5% may or may not get a flush in 30 years. So it's kind of, and Jeremiah asked me to come down and testify. I did testify for it or against it. What I testified for was, if they move forward with this, be mindful of the financial challenge counties on how we're gonna fund it. Yeah, I want, yeah, I want to take care of the law enforcement people. On the other hand, how we're gonna pay for it. So, that was kind of, you know, that's what I went down there for. It was a spur of the moment. We had a call Tuesday night, Monday night. You guys had a meeting. I gotta call him Tuesday night to be there Thursday, so. Told me I'd be there, packed up and ran. That's just a quick update. That was about, any questions about it? They did, they did move the draft forward to get LSO to present a bill and give a bill number. So I did move off the floor for that.
Any questions? Okay? Quick, a little, a quick update on that. And the executive section, Michael asked us to pull that, you know, do that. We have any handbooks?
Figured out.
If there's nothing else, confirm to the board. Drummit's in order. All go for.